Twenty-second, two thousand and eighteen Planning Board Meeting. Adequate notice has been given in the Sunshine Law. Notice has been published on March sixteenth in the New Jersey Star-Ledger, which is the official newspaper of the township of Springfield for two thousand and eighteen. Let's do a salute to the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can we have a quick roll call, please?
Mayor Richard Huber?
Yes.
Mr. David Barnett?
Present.
Mr. Andrew Schwartz, absent. Mr. Michael Gonzalez, absent. Mr. Jerry Fernandez?
Here.
Ms. Sylvia Ann Grisbowski, absent. Mr. David Hellmanstein?
Here.
Jeff Rosenberg?
Here.
Mr. Brian Brendel?
Here.
Vice Chairwoman Sharon Kessel is absent, and Chairman Jeff Tiger?
Yes.
Sir, we have a quorum.
Perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, can I, uh, everyone had saw the February minutes? Can I have a motion to approve the February two thousand and eighteen minutes?
So moved.
You can't, because you weren't here.
I can, I can, I can.
Okay, good. Any second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Any?
Upstairs.
Thank you.
Okay, perfect. Uh, we have no resolutions on the agenda. Um, I just want to take a quick moment to say thank you to our Planning Board Secretary Jen. These are some great reports, putting everything together. If everyone has an opportunity to review it, it's kind of like two thousand and seventeen in review. It shows all the applications before both boards.
I'm gonna go back to paper, please.
Sure.
That's the budget.
Thank you.
And then, for any board members that, you know, we, I appreciate everyone kind of moving things around because of the snow weather, no power and everything, so, you know, if anyone wasn't able to make it, we'll consider an excuse absence. It's kind of like musical chairs, we're changing everything around, so I appreciate it. First application we have is Application two dash two thousand and eighteen S, Atlas Marble and Granite, forty-four Fadham Road, block forty-two oh one, lot six, preliminary and final site plan variance relief, outdoor storage.
Yes, David Tromper, on behalf of the firm of Hale and Hale, representing Atlas Marble. I believe all the jurisdictional requirements has been met. And I have Mr. Duran of Atlas Marble with me here, and also Louis Puplo, who's our planner, to address the relief we're requesting. You know, essentially, what we're requesting is that the other four variances are all bulk variances that were there when you approved.
In existing.
Yeah, they existed in two thousand and thirteen.
Yeah, I remember.
Okay.
If you could give us a very brief, uh, if you could talk in the microphone and give us a brief overview, and then our attorney will swear again.
Mr. Duran, do you swear or affirm that the testimony provided to the board this evening will be the truth?
Yes.
Can you state and spell your name and business address for the record?
Okay. Marco Duran, M.A.R.C.O.S.D.U.R.A.N.
And your business address?
It is forty-four Fadham Road, Springfield, New Jersey.
Thank you.
So, do we need any, I don't think we need any testimony for the variances, because they were already granted, they were already done back in two thousand and thirteen, is that correct?
Unless they're, uh...
They are here for a variance.
Okay.
For a variance for outdoor.
Outdoor storage, but the prior variances?
No.
No. So, we just need your testimony on why it's beneficial to have outside storage and the detriments that you're avoiding.
I assume the planner will take care of that, but Mr. Duran is gonna give the factual explanation as to what, why you're here tonight, and why you're looking for relief, and then your planner will justify it all.
Right. Yes, and perhaps we should have the planner sworn through, because sometimes it's back and forth, so...
Yeah. Sir, raise your hand, please. Do you swear from the testimony provided before the board this evening will be the truth?
Yes.
Okay, can you please state your name and business address for the record?
Louis Puplo, L.O.U.I.S.P.U.O.P.O.L.O., four-six-five Mizell Avenue, Springfield, New Jersey.
Thank you.
Okay.
No, we'll let me out, I'll do something briefly.
Briefly.
No, this one's fine, should be fine. Mr. Duran is here to explain briefly again, the business of Atlas Marble, will be brief since it seems that you're familiar with it.
Very.
And why we're here tonight, right, as you explained, we're not here really on the other, yeah, be good?
Yes.
We're, we're not here on the other four bulk variances, I think, the side yard, the building covered, et cetera, et cetera. Those are, those are none whatsoever. But, as encapsulated in your two expert reports, Mr. Disco's report, and I believe it's Mr. Michael's report, the issue is outdoor storage. Uh, you know, listen, we understand, I understand, unfortunately, I wasn't here back in two thousand and thirteen, that outdoor storage is probably the, it's also probably the only reason. And I'm going to ask in a few minutes, few moments, Mr. Duran to explain how this has come about, why it's come about, why he needs it, and I suspect, you know, at that point, you know, Mr. Puplo can address the, you know, positive and negative criteria for the variance, and then it'll really just be question and answer, I think.
Agreed.
There are issues that are raised in the reports that I think are most germane, and we probably ought to just get right to that, instead of you sitting here listening to me talk. So, with that, I would just ask Mr. Duran, just briefly, for, just to explain what it is Atlas Marble does.
Hi, everyone, thank you. Atlas Marble Granite is a cut-to-size fabrication shop. We specialize in serving developers, builders, contractors, designers, and also introduced to me in Springfield, big box accounts, Ikea, Home Depot's. So, the reason why I'm here, and it is based on growth, it's been based on the American dream. I came to Springfield thinking I'm gonna have a nice, easygoing shop. My eyes were wide open, it was a huge place to me.
Let me, let me just interject. So, when you got your approvals back in two thousand and thirteen, you were, all your storage was inside the warehouse, is that right?
Initially, yes, yeah.
Now, at some point, you started storing stuff outside.
Well, the reason why is...
First of all, what, what is it that you're storing outside?
Slabs.
Okay.
Slabs are cut-to-size. They, and the nature of our business is that it arrives in flatbed, and they arrive also in A-frames. They're not a box truck product, they're not a container product, they're not, it's a, it's a product that you've, maybe you've seen on the highways, you've seen these big frames with slabs strapped onto them. That's the only way these are transported and offloaded, so that everything's, it's a yard sort of process, in offloading and loading.
And where in the yard do you store them?
Well, the only area that I wasn't using, which was the back, and it was conducive for us to work both sides of a flatbed, offload, set them on a rack, and then queue them for, you know, for cutting.
Okay, and the racks are, racks are off the ground? I mean, how far off the ground?
Yeah, yeah, all of the racks, as you can see, one of the photos that you'll see there on, a specific frame that it, it supports them, and they elevate them also.
Okay, so you're not, it's not as if you're storing gravel or mulch or anything like that that gets spread around. These are big, solid pieces of stone.
Yeah, and all of them have a purpose, and all of them have a timeframe about when they're gonna get queued for cutting, and it's a rotation, and it's just a, a process of volume now.
So, in terms of your operation, does this cause any difficulty, other than, you know, what you had with the inside storage? I mean, or is it essentially the same process?
What it is, is the, it's, it's the same process. And on the inside, we, we actually hold and store materials that are a little bit more sensitive, and they're also more, uh, one of a kind, let's say. It's marble. And the process of it coming all the way from Italy or somewhere else in the world, it's kept closer to the machines so that there's not that much distance in transporting it. The stuff that you see in the yard is stuff that's a little bit more of a commodity, and also, it's a bit more hearty as well.
So, it's not, it's not garbage, it's just your material that you're gonna be using, first in, first out, bringing it in?
Yes, exactly.
Getting it prepared and so forth.
Exactly.
Reason you're asking for this is basically you've grown, you wanna stay in Springfield, and this is your way to kind of accommodate staying in Springfield, is to use some outside storage?
Absolutely.
Word of any questions?
Yeah, that pretty much captures it. Do you have got questions?
For this witness, or you wanna do them at the end, when we have both, after we hear the...
No, I guess, I guess I have for this. So, you were here in two thousand and thirteen, I voted in favor of your application then. Number six here clearly says, "No outdoor storage of any material shall be permitted." And according to our expert, by two thousand and fourteen, you were storing material outside.
Yes, it wasn't my intention.
What was unclear about the fact that this board said, "No outdoor storage of any material," and you decided on your own to store material outside, and now years later, are coming back to ask permission for something that we clearly said not to do, prior to you coming back to us and saying, "I want to store material outside and file this, this application back in two thousand, October of two thousand and fourteen, when you decided to store material outside?"
It was necessity, just making a living.
It was not a necessity, because we had agreed several months prior, you had agreed, no material outside.
Right.
So, what you should have done is come and said, "I need material," and this application should have been years ago. And that is my, one of the issues that I have right now. How could I believe that you're not gonna be here a couple years later from now, after you had been blatantly disregarding what we had agreed to and what you had agreed to? And then you're gonna be asking us for some other variants?
Well...
Explain that, and how I should trust this, this application.
Well, first of all, it did come for an occupancy variance, and it was not deemed specifically about outdoor storage. It's one of the, it's one of the paragraphs in it, and it wasn't something that was solely, you know, focused on. It was one of the, it was one of the articles in there. So, the focus was, what was the nature of my business? What were we doing? The request for an overhead garage door?
What was unclear about number six, "No outdoor storage of any material"?
It's my fault that I didn't focus on it. It's, it, there's no, it's not an excuse for it.
Sam, has any, Sam, has any of the neighbors or surrounding areas have any complaints?
Sam.
Has any of the neighbors or businesses around that area had any concerns or questions about this, about him storing? How'd this come out? If it's business...
Obviously, there's nobody here that's having issue with it. The way it came out, our zoning officer was driving in the area, and he noticed it, and he asked me, "Do they have approval to store outdoor material, materials?" And I looked at the resolution, and I said, "No." So, we contacted the owner, and he came in and filed the application.
So, unfortunately, you got caught, is, is why you're here tonight.
Well, getting caught is, is, I don't, I think that's, that's a little strong, getting caught. I wasn't in the act of, of trying to...
But that, that's true, when you agreed...
I'm in the act of doing business and trying to make a living.
...not the material. And then you got caught years later. I, I, I understand completely, I have no more, there were no questions in there, but maybe there were, but I'm done. I understand what happened. Well, I think it's important for the witness to explain why the outdoor storage became necessary, very quickly.
Yeah, but you should have came to the board.
No, I understand.
Perfectly, perfectly understandable.
Yeah, the idea was coming to Sam and fill in the petition, or fill in the department's petition.
Yeah, just saying, my business grew, you know, it's great, I need relief, type of a thing. I, I understand that Mr. Barnett's concerned.
And let me, you know, let me say this. I was not involved, and I've only been involved in this for five weeks or so. And I'm new to this board, but I've been before boards, other boards, for twenty, thirty years. And if Mr. Duran is gonna continue to be my client, I'm not gonna encourage, and I'm not even gonna allow, any continued violation of his approvals, whatever they may be, because that's not what I do to my clients. I don't say, try to pull the wool up somebody, because that never works. And now he's my client. And this sort of thing isn't gonna happen again.
Yeah.
I can give you my assurance.
Well, what I'm, what I think we'll do is, if the board does act favorably, it will be very clear in the resolution about, you know, garbage, slabs will be the only thing, and it will be checked upon by the engineering office and the zoning officer from time to time, as he does drive around and check on things. But, uh, did you have anything further, Mr. Barnett?
No, I, this is...
If I can make the comment...
Absolutely, keep on, I'm going down.
Um, I wasn't here three years ago, so I don't know the, the reasons why the board did what they did at the time, or, or whatever, but just looking at the current pictures, it seems like a, like a safety issue. No access, you know, a fire truck has to get through, very narrow pathways in the back there, certainly if they're moving fast, you know, with lots of slabs all around. Did you give that any consideration? I mean, other than just filling up empty space with the slabs, you know?
We did send this to the fire department, and they had no further comment, correct?
I said it was our...
They didn't say anything, they didn't...
Well, that, and I agree with, with you down there, looking at this picture number two here, I don't know how a car can even get through there. I mean, the fire department should give us a yes or a no answer, one way or another, because it's not like you're moving pillows here, if they have to get in there. This thing, I mean, you know, you're gonna run it over and knock it all down, which is fine, in case of a fire, but that was my concern as well.
There was, there was a brush fire, I believe, this past May, right behind the power station, and the only access was through our yard, and the fire department came and efficiently put out the fire with, without asking us to move anything, and they moved swiftly, and did what they had to do.
My concern isn't the brush fire, my concern is the buildings.
I was just giving an example of how they went into their backyard.
And I'm not saying no, but I, I would ask for the fire department to give us an answer one way or another.
But, but what we'll probably end up doing is, if the board acts favorably, we'll send it to the fire department, they'll have to give it an approval, if not, you have...
I'm willing to work with any contingencies you wanna offer.
There's no cutting outside?
No, sir.
Nothing at all?
No.
Because I've seen yours where the cut outside, it looks like...
You're welcome to come, and all of our equipment is automated equipment on the inside, it's all what, fabrication?
How many slabs do you have out there? I mean, how many pieces? It looks like a lot, how many you got out there?
Well, yeah, some of them are depending on projects, and so, and that's, and that's the flexibility I was looking for, because sometimes, now, and more recently, over the last two years, as, as you know, the economy is, is, is growing, and things are booming, so I've picked up contracts where there, there are bulk vertical projects, where they're gonna drop off sixty, seventy, eighty slabs for short term, but they're gonna drop them off there. And so, that's why the rack system's set up that way. Now, the back, the back end of it are the remnants, and that's something that I can do to, you know, shrink that down.
How long are they out there for? What's, what's usually the period of time they're out there?
Anywhere from...
What's the average?
Four to eight months on rotation, depending on projects.
He restocks.
Folks, I, I have, I have the Ikea account, and that is a, that's, that's a rotation. I just picked up that account in two thousand and fourteen. I was approached with the Elizabeth store, took on that account from another failing fabricator, and that, that was local, and basically, I was just flooded with work because of that account. And it's been, and it's been that way. So, since then, in two thousand and fifteen, I picked up the Paramus account, I was awarded, and then I was awarded the Brooklyn account in two thousand and sixteen.
As a small business owner, it's great, but there comes cost to bringing in more business. I mean, in light of...
It's, I'm the only fabricator in the New York metropolitan free state area that was awarded this account.
So, let's take a step back, and then, because I'm gonna bring some order instead of everyone jumping around. How many employees do you have?
Thirty.
Thirty employees? How many parking spots do you have?
I believe twenty.
So, how does that work?
Twenty. Well, a lot of our employees, they carpool, and a lot of them also get dropped off, so we have no problem with our employees that have cars parking there.
If they're supposed to have, for thirty employees, what's it have, how many spots?
So, so, let's take a step back.
It's all based on, on the building itself, and whether the square house, office space at, at the variant.
Mr. Disco, you, you had a site visit, can you tell us a little bit about the site, and the parking, and, and these pictures, and so forth? You always do a good report, and it's kind of valuable, if you can help us build on it.
Yeah, again, the day I...
Can you talk in the microphone?
The day I went out there, there were six available parking spaces, you know, that were empty. What I tried to do in number four of my report was outline what, based upon my aerial view of the building, what the parking requirement would be for office and warehouse. So, industrial requirement was forty spaces, warehouse requirement was twenty, they have twenty-two spaces there. So, on the day I was there, it was sixteen of the twenty-two spaces were...
And they're allowed, it seems to me you can park on the street, too?
Can park on the street. What I tried to show in the other pictures was how difficult to rely on that on-street parking, because apparently, you've got other users on that Fadham Avenue that are, that are parking on the street substantially. So, it's difficult to rely on that.
So, can you help the board understand, Mr. Fernandez, and Mr. Rosenberg brought up some good points about fire and stuff? You were out there, you toured the site, help us understand that.
Yeah, I think if a fire truck had to get to the rear loading dock, that's gonna be difficult, no question about it. A fire truck, or any emergency vehicle accessing the building, it's no different than the cars parked on the side of the building. They're not all just magically gonna disappear, so the, the direct access to physically touching the building is not gonna be there. Typically, the fire equipment we have is gonna reach over and access the building. The building is not of any substantial height that we couldn't do that. It's just the concern, how do they get to the back?
Yeah.
Obviously, when they came here in two thousand and thirteen, they needed access to the rear bay door. Now, that, that seems to be difficult. So, I don't know if that's a change condition, or they're just avoiding that, that bay, but if you had to get to the rear of the building with a vehicle, it'd be very difficult.
Yeah, so, we need information from the fire department to make, to move this application.
Can I, just to clarify that thought also, to ask a question, is it the same amount of slabs that are pretty much always there? You take some in, you put some back out, or are there up, up and down times, less, more, less, more? How does that work?
Well, yeah, I think, for the most part, we're of the mindset also that we try to always keep it condensed. And there's a time limit where material just, it won't sell, it's past this point, and we, we pretty much either donate it to Habitat for Humanity, or we try to, or we try to sort of sell it to a secondary market. So, there, I would say, the full slabs that you see, it's pretty much accurate all the time. What, what grows and what expands and contracts are the remnants.
During the periods of growth, is no other place, a corner of the interior, or whatever, during those growth periods?
On the interior, there, it's, it's also occupied inside. So, inside, there are, it's completely occupied with full slabs, too.
So, let's do this, let's get your planning testimony on. I'm probably gonna recommend to the board we carry this to the next meeting, because I, I want the fire department to give us a report, and be comfortable, not comfortable, maybe they'll go out with Mr. Disco for, for a visit, and Mr. Martini, and go that route, and figure out what's the best possible thing, because I definitely, as, as Mr. Fernandez and Mr. Rosenberg pointed out, you know, to me, I don't know how I'd get through there with my Ford Explorer. It's a little tight, you know, so let's see what the case is. So, let's just get some testimony from the planner, of what the detriments, uh...
Yeah, he's been sworn. Mr. Puplo, you, you, you're familiar with the site, visited, you drew up the site plan, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, well, again, why don't, why don't you walk the board through, all of us through, what your...
Can we, can we take this back? We need to qualify him as an expert witness.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Can you give us his credentials?
Yes. Mr. Puplo, are you a professional planner licensed in the state of New Jersey?
Yes, I am.
And for how long?
Nineteen eighty-eight.
And has that license ever been suspended or revoked?
Not at all.
And you're also a professional answer, is that correct?
Correct.
And when were you first licensed in New Jersey?
Nineteen eighty-seven.
Has that license ever been revoked or suspended?
No.
And have you testified before, before planning boards, zoning boards of adjustment on planning issues?
Yes.
How many times?
Um...
Let me ask you this.
He's got gray hair, we'll give him the...
Have you testified, have you been accepted as an expert by the board of the, the planning board of the township of Springfield?
Yes, I have.
That's fine, we'll accept him as a witness. Any problems?
Nope. And I offer him as an expert planner, and to the extent necessary, as a supervisor. So, Mr. Puplo, we've, we've discussed a lot about the, you know, the positive, negative criteria. This is a C-variance, and can you explain, both under, you know, C-one, C-two, why you believe that Mr. Duran should be allowed to store these stone slabs, excuse me, outside of his warehouse, on the site?
Now, right now, in the C-one, there's the pre-existing non-conforming issues that have been there for a while, lot sizes, you can't conform to it, it's impossible to conform to that lot size.
Once it's passed, we don't need testimony on, because the board's already ruled on it. We just wanna focus on the outdoor storage.
Correct. That, that's what, the board's already said that we're not here to discuss the bulk variances, just the issue of the outdoor storage of the slab, so we'll keep it to that, then the board can ask you questions.
It, it's just a matter of him storing his materials out there. I have no idea what other questions you'd like to ask me about it.
How does it hurt the neighborhood? You know, how does it change the characteristics?
It's an industrial area.
What's around him that...
Behind him, there is a Union County Park, Low Woods, there is another building behind him, but it's only a parking lot that's there, isn't used every time that I've been out there. Across the street, there is a, I believe it's a, a school for disabled children, and a church. There's parking, that's a lot of tractor-trailers that are in the, the parking lot there. Behind him, oh, on one side of him, towards Route twenty-two, there's the, a window manufacturer. Tractor-trailers are all in there. And to the left of him is a power station, substation.
So, would you say, I'm not saying it's appropriate to have all this stuff out there, but the area would be conducive potentially to that?
Uh, yes. Where, where he keeps them, just by the topography of the land, it can't be really seen from the street, because the site goes up, and where he is, it's down into the back of the property.
Mr. Disco, you were there, do you agree with that?
It, that's somewhat true, yeah. I mean, it's probably why it hasn't been reported earlier than this, because from the street, you're looking through the parking lot, through the parked cars, and the, the material storage is at the rear, so. There is a slight bend to the driveway as well, so it's not a full rectangle at the, at the face of the property where it meets the street, so.
So, I know we don't have Mr. Michaels here, and we will, at least for the next meeting, but what are your thoughts, from a planning standpoint?
Well, as Mr. Michaels pointed out in his letter, I mean, it is, he tried to point out that it was located to the rear of the property from a visual standpoint, as far as the impact to your master plan and your zone plan, so I think that's what the applicant should rely on. I, I think from my site visit, you know, Mr. Puplo put limits on his drawing where the storage was gonna be. I think they've encroached a little bit beyond that, so I think the board should be cognizant that you wanna control, not just give a blanket outdoor storage, that you wanna limit where maybe the forward point of it is, so that it doesn't impact the existing parking, and then become more visible to the passerby.
That's a good point. So, I wanna open up the board for any questions, so we can do it, but what I'm gonna do is carry you to the April twelfth meeting, giving you the ability to have, I'm gonna request the fire chief go out with Mr. Martini and Mr. Disco, work that out, as well as, on the plans, isolate where are the right places to store this, where they're comfortable, work that out as well as on the plans, isolate where are the right places to store this, where they're comfortable so it can help get the board comfortable. You know, the good news is we have a meeting in two, two and a half, three weeks. So it works out and hopefully hold up anything you have an application.
What doesn't matter, because he's already doing it.
I know, but, you know, at least from a standpoint after, if it didn't get approved, then you'd have a problem, but at least...
Yeah, let me ask what the date of that...
April 12th.
April 12th.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, I think there should be some testimony about how they're accessing the materials now, whether it's one of the forklift type of vehicles.
Why don't we do that as well?
Yeah, we access all of them through with a forklift.
Okay, so, I mean, the aisle width for a forklift is obviously much narrower than an emergency vehicle requirement.
Right, we have to get the fire chief to go out there, there's no bottom line. To review and see emergency vehicles and be able to plot out. That way, Mr. Disco can see the limits of where you're having these materials, see how the width of a fire truck is, the width of emergency vehicles, and determine if it's safe or not. And then we'll come back.
Okay, can the board give me a notice of when this is going to happen so that...
Yeah.
Pablo should also be out there.
Mr. Martini will communicate with you and to get a date that works for everyone.
Yeah, I may go out as well, so.
More than welcome.
Do we carry it?
Yeah, so any board members have any questions before I carry this application? Any members of the public here for application 2-2018? Seeing none, don't rush up. I'm going to carry this application to the April 12th, 2018.
Same time or 7:00?
No, it's at 7:00.
Yeah, I appreciate...
7:00 PM.
Yeah, I appreciate your being here at 6:30.
Yeah, it's at 7:00 PM, you will be first on the agenda since I'm carrying you. So be prompt and just make sure that between now and then, the applicant works out with the fire chief as well as our engineer, where you're going to disturb this and submits some drawings so that we're able to see that.
And no further notice required.
And no further notice, and no further notice is required.
Thank you very much.
I see that there's a lot of people interested in it.
Just what's the name of the fire chief, I'm sorry?
Chief Carlo...
Carlo Lumbo.
Yes, so with that, thank you for coming.
Have you, do you get inspected every year though by our, do they get inspected by our guys every year?
Not us, maybe the fire department, but not us.
No, that's what I meant, I meant the fire department doesn't...
Yeah, all businesses get inspection by the fire department.
So when was the last time you had, when were they out there last?
They come every year right on schedule.
Did they check out there and everything?
They have full run of the place.
I think when they do an inspection, they do building inspection to make sure inside safety issues are...
Yeah, but they, at our place, they look outside too. When I have the outdoor patio, they went outside.
We're going to find out real quick, we're going to find out real quick, it'll be three weeks.
I understand.
On what the position is. So like I said, I'm going to carry this to April 12th, 2018 at 7:00 PM in this very room.
Okay, and that's just not a lot of time, so I'll be in touch with, you know...
I mean, if you want, we can always, if you can't make the 12th, then you want me to roll it to May?
No, we'll make the 12th.
I don't want to go much past that because it'll violate...
Well, yeah, we've already adjourned it twice.
Yeah, so, all right, well, thank you for coming.
Yes, members, thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next application is application 3-2018, Temple Beth Ham, 60 Temple Drive, Block 506, Lot 5. Beth Amysrael. So before we begin, I just want to make sure from the board, there are no conflict, no members of the board or members of Temple Beth Ham.
Uh, yeah.
No, you're not.
My family is. My son.
Is that, your son's, his son's a member?
But you're not, you're not a member.
You're not getting off. Okay, so...
His son wasn't bar mitzvah, so it's okay.
Fair enough.
If you could just please give us a brief overview.
Let's give him one minute.
No, just practice. I'm over. Is it big print so I can see?
Right here for you.
Your spray paint cabinet, Barry.
That's perfect. We have a copy, we have a, is this the same? So we won't have to mark it? Is it the same as our?
Exactly.
That it doesn't have to...
Yeah.
Sorry, submit. Okay, please proceed.
Okay. Laura Herelik, appearing on behalf of the applicant owner, Temple Beth Amysrael, preliminary and final, minor site plan approval to construct a splash pad and a fenced-in area for play activity. The proposed site is in the rear of the temple property. At 60 Temple Drive, as you stated, Lot 506, Lot 1, in the MR, multi-residential zone. Places of worship, synagogues, are a permitted use within the MR zone. In fact, religious institutions have been considered through case law to be inherently beneficial uses that serve the purpose of zone. The temple, as part of its permitted use and as a benefit to the community, runs an early childhood program and a summer camp program. The proposed splash pad is an accessory to that permitted use and it will be used for children ages 18 months to five years of age. You should know that on February 7th of this year, at the location where the splash pad and the fenced area is proposed, a caretaker home was demolished, as were walkways and two trees. This resulted actually in a reduction of the lot coverage. The requested minor site plan approval for the splash pad and the fence requires no variances. In fact, because they're doing this project, you have this reduction in lot coverage. It is not as big as the house was. And this is all pursuant to the usual Section 3514 of the Schedule of Zoning for the Township of Springfield. You should know that the temple's early childhood and summer camp programs are growing. And it's these programs that are so important to the temple, to the community, and the reason why this project is being taken on by the synagogue. They want to give the kids a more active program. So the kids are their top priority. And as a result, the proposed minor site plan represents good and safe planning, but it is also done in conjunction with meeting their current and future needs. So we are in receipt of two review letters. One, as you know, from Mr. Disco, the other one being from Robert Michaels, Engineer Planner. And in the testimony that you'll hear tonight, you will know whatever questions were raised, we've addressed, and we're in compliance with your standards for approval of this plan. I'll just let you know that appearing and identifying tonight and to testify, keeping it brief, the last one, will be next to me Tracy, Tracy Schenker, who is our, not our, but the Executive Director for the Temple Beth Amysrael. And I have with me tonight, from Stonefield Engineering, John Istreni, who is a licensed professional engineer and a licensed planner in the state of Springfield. So I'd like to start with Tracy, if you would like to swear her in.
Let's swear her in.
Ms. Schenker, do you swear affirm that the testimony provided the board this evening will be the truth?
Yes.
Okay, and your, can I have your business address, please?
60 Temple Drive, Springfield, New Jersey, 07081.
Thank you.
So Ms. Schenker, if you would just tell the board just an overview of the early childhood program, of the summer camp program, just in terms of how many kids are there and why you're putting in this splash pad?
Currently, we have 97 children in the program. Our program, our early childhood program and summer camp are sort of one in the same. Our preschool year ends in June, then we go right into our summer camp, summer camp program, which is an eight-week program.
What are the hours of operation?
Seven to six, Monday through Friday.
And why do you need the splash pad?
To enhance our summer program. Since it is a camp program, we would like to have, you know, water play that's a safe water play for the kids. It's not just a sprinkler on the grass.
And when you talk about safe water play, anybody that's familiar with the synagogue knows that there's a parking lot, large parking lot that is adjacent to this area. How are you going to protect the kids in the splash pad?
There'll be a fence around the splash pad. We will, when there, the back parking lot where we walk across will be blocked off, the last section of the parking lot, so that cars that would happen to come at that time would not be able to go in that area. We'll also be using the splash pad at a time when we will not have parents picking up or dropping off.
And in addition to that, if there was to be a special event at the synagogue that required overflow parking toward that area, would you not use the splash pad that day?
Correct.
So they're flexible in terms of the use of the pad?
Yes.
It's never going to be used at nighttime?
No.
And that's the reason why there's no lot, it's not needed. And the fencing that you're putting out, well, we will have testimony about it. If you could just say, is this solid or you can see through the fence?
You can see through the fence.
And that's for safety reasons, correct?
Yes.
Okay. In terms of the recycling of the water, you are not going to recycle water because you have 18-month-olds?
Correct. If you use it with children, you're not going to, you're not doing that.
Chief, if I may, please, could you just state that?
Leave her alone.
Anyway, so, all in all, the whole purpose behind our minor site plan approval today is that you want to grow your program, you want to have more children enticed to come to the program.
Correct.
And this is a great summer activity.
Right, correct.
Anyone?
I don't have anything else for this.
Do you have room for expansion? Or should I ask the way for the engineer? Because you're trying to expand, in other words, the spray park is here. Now, they're trying to get more kids to come.
There's plenty of room.
Yeah, but I want to make sure, do you have room for more, for expansion?
The reason why the fence debris is not just fencing the splash pad, it's enlarged beyond, is to accommodate lots of kids playing while other kids are in the splash pad. In addition, it's a very large open grass area. And in the future, if they ever wanted to move the fence and go bigger, they can do that.
Are these, are the gates that are around there, are they locked at night? When not in use, to prevent trespasses?
Yes.
Okay, and I notice there's, you got different gates around, there's a 10-foot gate on the side. I assume that'll be the primary gate for the children going in and out. Then you got some 5-foot gates or 4-foot gates.
The smaller gates will be where the children will be going in and out. The larger gate, the 10-foot, we're installing just in case we ever need to have any work done. We have a large enough area to be able to get, you know, things back, their vehicles and such. That is the reason.
I'm sorry, it would also be if they wanted to deliver anything for a party with the children.
Yeah.
Anything larger, spout houses.
All right, and there's a gate I see in the back, which I guess opens up to the woods back there. That's just kind of, I guess, emergency exit?
Correct, exactly.
But it doesn't open right into woods, I mean, there's still more to it.
There's plenty of room back there.
Yeah.
Is that the spot that's used for auxiliary parking over there, where that gate opens up and stuff?
But when the children, when the children are in there, I guess, and supervised, they're all going to be hurdled through a single gate away from the parking lot.
Correct, yes.
Let's go one at a time, Mr. Brendo.
So can you just say again, I think you said it before, when kids are going from the building or the playground area to that, how will they get there, they'll cross the parking lot, is that the...
They'll cross, at the end of a sidewalk that we have by our playground, they'll cross at that point right to where the gate will be. So, and then we will block off the last section of the parking area so that cars, if cars were to come back there, they couldn't come to that last area.
Just so I can clarify what Ms. Schenker said. There is a sidewalk that already exists, leading from the door of the synagogue toward this back area. There are no parking spaces that they're going to be crossing when the children go across. It's beyond the actual parking space, but they're going with extra safety measures to block off an entire parking section of that parking lot so that there's no way that the cars are even anywhere near the splash pad.
Yeah, you're walking literally out by the jungle gym play area, it's fine. Mr. Huber, anything further?
Do you have any alarms that are going to be on around this thing? Because at night, you know how kids are, and you know kids are going to try and go on, going, older kids, I'm saying, once it gets dark out, and kids can go in there. I want to make sure, no accidents can happen. I don't say any accidents, no accidents will happen, but they can, I want to make sure.
Where's the shut-off for the water, that's a better way to say it. It's in...
How deep is all of it?
It's not, it's a splash?
Splash.
But I just want to make sure, I'm going to make sure some freak accident doesn't happen. And I'm very, you know... I was going to say, with the water...
There's no water, the water's gone.
Yeah.
It's flat, it's flat.
Where's the shut-off?
There's no water, you can't, the water's shut off, it's just going to be dry.
Correct.
Every day.
It's like a splash ground, is what it is.
The engineer is going to give you, and there's a picture of it.
There's a picture of it.
It is, it is on, it is on, it is a slide, literally no water can accumulate. It's flat.
It drains.
It doesn't hold water, it just sprays water.
Like a big slip-in slot.
Yeah, it's a big slip-in slot.
Big slip-in slot.
We'll go back to that question if, if, Mr. Brenner?
I have no questions. How often is the water getting replaced and who's doing the quality monitoring of the water?
No, it's not, it's not recycled water. It's fresh water.
Okay, and how often is that being monitored?
It's fresh water.
It's fresh water.
Fresh water.
It's coming from American Water right now.
Oh, okay, got it.
Because of the age of the kids, to recycle that water may not be the benefits of that.
It's, it's a simple, I think...
I mean, I think, just so that the board knows, all of this detailed questions are going to be...
We're going to go with him, it's fine. I think the board's happy.
I think we're okay, right?
Yes, I think we're fine. Do you want to swear him in?
Do you want me to swear him in, or did you want to swear him in?
Yes, yes, swear him in.
Mr. Chairman, wait, I think it should get on the record that there would be no rental of this facility, no outside groups are going to come in, there would be no fee-based, which would be strictly for, okay.
We'll put that in the resolution, good point, we'll put that in the resolution. Go ahead, he's going to swear.
Yes, sir. Do you swear affirm that the testimony provided the board this evening will be the truth?
I do.
And please state and spell your name and your business address.
Sure, for the record, my name is Jonathan Istreni, that's I-S-T-R-A-N-Y-I. I'm a Senior Project Manager at Stonefield Engineering, located at 92 Park Avenue in Rutherford, New Jersey. I'm a duly licensed professional engineer and professional planner in the state of New Jersey. Been in the field of land development for over seven years. I've testified before numerous boards throughout New Jersey. This will be my first time in Springfield tonight.
We'll accept you, the board have any objections?
No.
You might run after this.
Welcome to Springfield.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Istreni, if you work for the board, just first, so that everybody's clear on what a splash pad is. Explain the splash pad, and then if you could explain the drainage with regard to the splash pad and just the details with respect to the site plan.
Certainly, so for the board's reference, the splash pad is a 20 by 20 square, 400 square foot concrete pad. There are jets that shoot out, there's no standing water, there's no ponded water. It is sloped to the center, pitched at a center to a single drain where the water is collected. There will be a water line that will feed into this. It is not recycled water, there is no water that you fill in and it's utilized. It's just similar to an irrigation line. It will feed fresh water always into there, it will be collected into the center. And the applicant has previously corresponded with Sam from the township, and it was agreed upon that the water would be collected into a single drain and then there will be a curtain drain, which is just the perforated pipe encased in stone that will discharge out the back of the property into the rear wooded area.
Okay, and with respect to the parking lot, since you're a planner, if you would be kind enough to give your opinion with regard to safety?
Certainly, so as previously mentioned before, the children exit through the school via the existing playground. There is a sidewalk there, there's a drive aisle, there's no parking. It is proposed to have a temporary traffic barrier that shuts off that drive aisle so that no vehicles are permitted into that rear parking area. In the planner's letter that I have here, they also mentioned potentially putting another barrier on the other drive aisle. The applicant is amenable to potentially using traffic cones instead of another barrier. Just simply because at that point, there's, it's a bit overkill. The barrier is in place to prevent vehicles from going out there. So no other vehicles will be able to circulate around that area.
Okay, with respect to the character of the neighborhood, this is an MR.
Yes.
Is anybody going to see this?
It is not, it's in the rear of the site, as previously mentioned by the attorney. It's in the MR zone, house of worship's are permitted in this zone. Splash pad is accessory to the permitted use. This is what I would like to call a clean application, there's no variances. The fencing in the splash pad are compliant by zoning code. If anything, the only change in bulk will be a slight decrease in both lot coverage and building coverage.
Ms. Clarice, anything further for this witness before I open the floor?
No, I think he's covered the plan.
Mr. Fernandez?
I'm good.
Mr. Bellstein?
I'm good.
No questions.
Brenner, Mr. Huber?
No.
I'm good.
You're good?
Yeah.
Okay, so anything further before we...
No, I would only, I would only conclude by saying that I believe that between Ms. Schenker and my planner engineer, that we've shown the board it is a clean application. We've shown that we are going to be safe with regard to this minor site plan and that we are not doing anything that would be detrimental to the zone plan and we are in fact enhancing the municipal land use law and the purpose beyond.
I agree, I have no questions, so with, so let me open it up to the public. Anyone in the public that wish to speak on application 3-2018S?
Big crowd.
All right, seeing none, I'm going to close this application to the public and open the board. Any board further questions?
No, no problem.
I'm just wanting, before we entertain a motion, can we just read what conditions that we've come up with?
Sure, there's only, there's very few of them. It'll be no nighttime usage, just dust, 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 dawn. It will, the facility is not for rental to outside groups, it's only for the synagogue and the synagogues. The groups operated by the synagogue, meaning the summer camp and the nursery. They've offered to provide cones to control traffic on the egress driveway lane rather than a physical barrier instead of the barrier that Mr. Michaels recommended.
We do have a barrier though on the main...
On the ingress, I would call it the ingress lane, but the barrier. That is, and there's going to be no water recycling, it's just going to be discharged out to the back, so...
You know, on the no rental issue, should we, should we expand on that and say, you know, not to include, well, not to include members who maybe have a, what, have a birthday party, you know, as a member, they can do something like that without...
I think it is...
So they don't have proper supervision, you know?
I think it's to outside groups, so if...
But I think that's just...
If a synagogue member wants to have a birthday party at the synagogue, that's a, that's a part of, that's synagogue's use. But it's not like if the...
So that would require synagogue supervision.
That's right.
So, that would require synagogue supervision then too, right?
That's right, so that, I would think that would be okay. It's not like they're going to advertise to say, okay, have your birthday party here with, uh, with a, with a swim park or a water park.
Yeah, that would be a problem.
That would be a problem. It's for the, if, if a member of the temple wants to have a party there, they, you're responsible for the supervision just like if you had a bar mitzvah or a wedding.
I was about to say, I mean, all synagogues allow the rental of their social halls to their members and things like that, so, it would be-
Right, well, if, assuming, assuming the synagogue would, would rent their hall out to the Knights of Columbus for a party, that would be, you wouldn't rent this facility out to an outside group, correct? This is just for the, the membership and, and its organization.
Imagine what you'd have to go through for a pool.
All right, so, anyone members of the board, any questions? Can I entertain a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion for the approval of application three dash two thousand and eighteen S with the conditions, uh, as listed by our board attorney.
Any second?
One second.
Mr. Brendo?
Oh, okay.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Barnett?
Yes.
Mayor Huber? Mr. Fernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Cummstein?
Yes.
Mr. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Brendel?
Yes.
Chairman Tiger?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, so, wait, wait, I want to wave.
You know what I mean?
So, we're going to, we're going to wave.
Want to wave resolution?
Any member of the board have any problem with waving resolution?
None would.
No, so you guys can get, we will adopt this resolution on April twelfth. If you want to start at your own risk, feel free.
Soon as the snow melts.
Soon as the snow melts. Last thing is, we're going to carry, uh-
It's going to be a scheme or something.
We're going to carry the project update from Sam Mardini to our April twelfth meeting. Sam's going to be giving an update very frequently to the board, I know he's crying right now, uh, on what's, with the existing applications, what's been taking place and so forth. So, with that-
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Uh, very.
Run a tape meeting.
Thank you, thanks, nice meeting.